I'm gonna go ahead and call our meeting to orders. So, first question. Hearing them, we'll dive right in and we will start with tourism, item A. Do you have anything you wanna kick us off with as far as the discussion?
I would be glad to answer any questions if you have. Of course, any questions you need to, uh, to the all of the company agreements. Uh, if you would need to enter into a closed session, which you do now, you just have to do so under the appropriate provisions and it would have to relate to, uh, basically the contract.
Okay, is that something that we're able to do this evening?
You can if you would like to and, uh, I just kinda suggest you do that only if you get to that. If you feel you need to.
Okay. Um, alright, so when it comes to the regional tourism or internal tourism discussion, I had a couple of questions that I thought might guide our discussion just a little bit. But first, I was just curious if there's anything anybody wants to start with when it comes to the tourism discussion? Any major concerns or just items that you wanna mention under the topic?
I guess, so, under the topic, uh, cause I, I don't think I saw it the run of times. I might've misread it, but I think they kinda misquoted us that we, you know, council was trying to get the, that group that gave us the presentation, I can't think of the name of it, Randy.
Sure.
To get them to come in and work for us, to tell us how to run a program. That's the way I read it, the run of times, so, and that's not true. Yeah, so, they need to clean that up if you.
Okay, I'll look into it.
They did, cause I, I thought maybe I was, I was misreading it, but I read it two or three times to make sure that my brain was keeping in.
Mm-hmm.
This, that, we, town council was trying to bring them to work for us.
I can ask for a retraction or an adjustment.
Yeah, that was the truest thing that we was trying to do.
Sure.
Was just, to me, those informations that they were giving us, you know, the recommendations, they were making too deep tourism forward.
You know, not, not telling us, they're not gonna come and tell us and implement the programs.
Right.
So, that's my understanding, they're not gonna implement the program, it's left up to the tourism board to implement their recommendations.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanna get that straight.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It was confusing.
Well, yes. Well, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, so, um, as far as the agreement, I'm really excited to hear what we have to say. I, uh, concerned about several things and I wanted to give a suggestion from the beginning as far as like the tourism thing. I think that obviously we're paying into something right now that is really not doing the purpose that it was supposed to be for. And then, obviously, there is no director right now and so I feel like there is no justification to the hotels that we're not providing the services right now, so it's unfair for us to be charging those fees of lodging taxes to the hotel industry when we're actually not doing what's really, you know, what is due to them. And then, on, my suggestion would be, you know, looking at the percentages that we pay. The county pays three percent in lodging tax, the town of Christiansburg pays nine percent, and then the town of Blacksburg pays seven percent. I, I am in full favor of lowering the tax bracket for Christiansburg lodging tax to seven percent to be competitive with the other, um, industry, well, the other communities around us. Uh, obviously, we're not gonna go to three percent, I'm just asking to be at least a Blacksburg percentage. And I think my reason behind all of that is, as a person that goes traveling, and when I do go traveling, and not just for me, but when I used to do planning for a lot of the companies I used to work with, one of the things that I always looked up was taxes, fees, resort fees, a lot of those extra fees that added a large amount of money into, you know, the expenses that I had to work with. And for myself personally, I did not stay at several hotels and resorts over the years. Why? Because those brackets were a little bit higher than others. And so, I do think that when people are traveling, a lot of people, believe it or not, they are doing their research before they book something and I do think that if they have the time to invest into looking into those things, they're gonna look into and say, "Well, Christiansburg is a lot higher than Blacksburg. Why would I wanna stay in Christiansburg when I can just stay in Blacksburg in the middle of everything and not have to spend additional money?" Another thing that I was thinking about, you know, um, I, we're really encouraged, um, the town to, you know, um, for us to make a really good decision with this because I see that our aquatic center is doing a really good job. We have really good amenities in the town, we have parks, we have facilities, the aquatic center is amazing. We have places to go to, but for so many years we were part of this tourism agency with not receiving the benefits that we should've had. And so, you know, I just think that lowering that bracket to a little bit, uh, to make it just fair for everybody would be a good, a good thing for everybody. I, another thing was that, um, you know, the one thing about the contracts that I was saying, you know, there is no director now, it doesn't seem like there is a lot going on. I looked up into the app that they have, a lot of the information was not even really accurate. Um, one of those examples will be like, for example, the cottage farm, that's not being open right now. You got, um, all their information that I was just, literally just looking through really quick. Um, but like Depot, the Cambria Depot, that's not open every day. You cannot just tell a tourist to come and check that out when there is a time saying it's closed and if you wanna make an appointment for next week or whenever, whatever, you have to make appointments and, and there is, I wouldn't call the, unless you, it's, it's a visible site, I wouldn't call it, "Go to the Cambria store." Um, that to me just, um, is just misrepresentation. Um, and then, you know, to be fair to the hotels, if we weren't to spend any money from their tourism money, which a lot of the money comes from lodging tax, to spend it, you know, their services like a Main Street program or something like that, I think that is very, very unfair to them. And I can tell you from people that I was talking to this week that are in the hotel industry, that there those are, not to be rude to the town, but a lot of the people that are coming to this and staying in these hotels are going for court events and they are going to stay at these places not because they're wanting to go to the downtown. And some of the information there too is telling you about the downtown. Um, there were some, the stuff that was telling you about the downtown in Christiansburg in their app, that I just think is kinda sad. Downtown Christiansburg, as you spend some time shopping in downtown Christiansburg, keep your eyes out for even more public art adoring the sidewalks and walls, including a school colorful place that come alive through, um, through its top shirt, um.
What's your path for this?
That's under their app that they have.
Who's?
Uh, the, the Montgomery, um, County Tourism.
Okay.
And so, those are things that are, to me, come shopping to the downtown and then you go to a town to look for shopping places, how disappointing it will be, you know? And that's just from my perspective. I love traveling and everything and if I still die and I go to places where the places are really not open for business or, I mean, it's great that we're trying to get there, but I don't feel like we're there yet.
Okay, so, a question that I have just for the group, um, is what are some of the most important aspects that you, that are important to you when it comes to tourism in Christiansburg? If you could describe what's most important to you when it comes to tourism, what is included in that list?
I, to me, can I, um?
Yes, definitely.
Um, I think for tourism, for me, it would be, once again, the looks of your town, a face lift. Uh, we did a really good job with the signs, I think Christiansburg been amazing with those. I do still think fixing some of those dayways is a very, very good opportunity for the town of Christiansburg to invite people, not just come to town, but remember that experience of coming to town and thinking about, "Wow, that was just a beautiful town." Um, I think when, once you come to town, there is a lot of, hundreds of people that I didn't realize that come from even Washington to go to the farm, Sinclair Farm, and they come in buses. And I was like, "Wow, that's amazing." Just come to a farm that is just like five minutes away or ten minutes away from us and just to come and have that experience of go to a pumpkin patch. I just think that there is a lot more opportunities when people come to the town to see the beauty of the town. I do think that the plans for the downtown Christiansburg are absolutely gorgeous and stuff and those are the things that I wanna see through the town, not just in the downtown area, but, you know, their places in the town.
Okay, what else?
I'm, uh, real, Johanna San, as far as the website, if it's that far behind, it really needs to be updated cause the depot in Cambria, I don't think they even open now, but I think they sold that yummy notice.
There was like a.
I think they sold a book to the antique store and it been listed as an antique store.
The, the bookstore is called.
The bookstore itself, but the.
I don't even think it's opening this time.
It would, a lot of people, they're looking for it, they want to. Um, it is listed on the, uh, Regional Landmarks Register and the National Register, just for places too. So, it might, it might be listed simply because of that and just how the association is related. Uh, people do use the platform for viewing occasions or things like that.
Okay.
I think for me, it looks maybe, oh, sorry, why?
No, I think, once again, I say, you know, yeah, we're a small town and to me, we're not a dirty small town. I mean, we, we keep the streets fairly clean and sidewalk and it was just like flowers, that was clean. And, you know, maybe somebody just wanna take a small walkin' downtown, not shopping, cause we all, there's no shopping downtown. So, that, so, it's kinda misleading. I think we just need to scan, bring things up to date.
Some things that, if this prompts any other thoughts for you, when I was kinda brainstorming what I wanted out of tourism, I, my idea for twofold, external marketing, which is telling people outside of Christiansburg what's happening in Christiansburg to make sure that they know what, why they should come here. And then, internal marketing to tell people who are here already, for sports events, who are from uptown, staying in our hotels, that Christiansburg is the place to like come and eat and come and check out our stuff and shop and like visit for whatever events are going on. So, I see it kinda twofold, so, those are, I mean, those are my, those are the aspects of tourism I think are most important or our biggest opportunities, um, and so, I don't know, does that prompt any other thoughts for you all?
When I think of tourism, I think about the books that you see at the hotel place. I think about all the beautiful places that you can go and visit while you're there.
Mm-hmm.
And right now, we're lacking that. There is not necessity, like, yeah, there is enough, but how many people actually have the ability to get it out? And in my case, I had to download it and unload it because I have so many pictures and my, my phone is always full, but, but, the, the point of that is, is that it's so much fun when you go traveling somewhere else that's not your place and looking at the booklet, even if it's for the kids to get a coupon. Uh, I do think that those coupon things are really great marketing material that we're lacking, um.
I just think a variety of attractions, small business, retail, restaurants, uh, Old Nine Yards, that has a broad, like, you know, a, a small downtown, uh, or, or a town, you know, can have the offer. I go and look at other places that I wanna go to.
And not, not just downtown, this, and I wouldn't say they're pro-son, not pro-terries here, but you need, you have somebody to come in and then we be on swim every day or every other day. Do they really know that the aquatic center is open to the public? No, no. I don't know, so, mm, to word out that the aquarium's open to the public, so, the rec center, you know, it's not, this town is residents, almost unemployed, it's a town residents, it's open to the public.
Yeah.
You have to pay a little bit of money, but you know, some people might be working to go in and swim, of course.
I can, I can give a suggestion about even our website, that, when I say that we don't have to invest in that because we, I think there is a lot that we can do as a town, even in our own website. And you guys do a great job, so I'm not talking bad about it. I'm just saying that instead of having the picture of the cows all the time or something, have like a picture of one of the parks one day, or maybe next week you'll switch it to the park on Summer Ridge or the other one, a depot park or. I love the video, it's funny, cause I always think about that one video about, that you made about the park, props downtown and, I don't know why that one captured, cause you have made many, but that one really kinda spoken to me. Really cool, like, I guess, uh, the way you made it, it was much fun. We can make little clips like that and even just put things on Facebook of, you know, like, I do think social media is worth investing in. And I just think that the town thinks, the town has invested money into events and, and things that we do, even if it's on the screens, the LED signs. I mean, there are many people in the town that have lived here for thirty, forty years have no clue that Depot Park exists. And I think that's a lot of opportunities because I think we have to share the word and what a best idea to do it than just present it in something that they can, they can see. And maybe it's just with an image of what the park looks like. Um, many people still don't even realize that there is a dog park. I mean, just like we know because we have been so involved with everything that, I mean, there are people that still don't even realize with little things, so, I think we can do the lot better even than tourism has done for the last years for us.
So, um, so, I wanna come back to a couple of those ideas, but I was curious if we could take a minute just to brainstorm some of the pros of internally managing tourism. Our budget right now is, well, let me step back, what we put now into the regional tourism is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars. That's, uh, thirty percent, thirty-seven percent of what it is. So, um, I'm just curious with yours, of, of your thoughts, number one, uh, what are the pros of shifting that into an internally managed program? And number two, is that enough money to do what we think is most important for the town?
I think five thousand dollars even will go longer. I mean, I think if you did some small budget, and I do think, I still follow the idea that lowering the tax bracket for those lodging tax will make a big difference. I know it's two percent, but at the end, how many more sales can we actually achieve? You know, if you get a corporate group that are renting fifty rooms in one time, will they stay at the Virginia Inn, I mean, at Virginia Tech Inn, or will they stay in Christiansburg? Because now all of a sudden, you know, the lodging fee is less. I mean, when you look at those numbers, it becomes a big amount, a number, uh, a big number. And sometimes even for a family, you know, that are just staying in maybe a two-bedroom hotel, four-bedroom hotel, I mean, which you, sometimes you have to rent two places, in my case, I mean, that's, that's a big chunk of money. Maybe, you know.
Maybe one action I had about this meeting is that we can ask Randy to talk with now and find out what the impact of lowering the budget by that two percent.
That would decide.
And that's just information we can have and we can decide what does that impact and is that something we have to relate somewhere else with other taxes? Um, but, that does not, Randy, is that nine percent, um, does that include our, the percentage that we, uh, charge or that, that hotels charge to put into tourism or is that separate?
We, we collect a nine percent, one percent of the nine percent.
Is for the.
That is dedicated to tourism. And the agreement was revised a few years into the agreement to allow localities to retain fifteen percent internally for tourism, which we did basically when they adopted that change. And, uh, we're, we're the only locality doing that, but we've been doing that since, so, it's okay, they changed.
Alright.
Going back to the question that you did throughout, are you referring to, turn a full-time person to do our own tourism?
Yeah, what do you think? I mean, is that the right answer? I was, I mean, I, I don't know.
Well, I think the, if we try to throw this, um, on another department that's gonna bring them on shore, do I feel, should we hurt another person? I guess it depends on if we do, what do we expect for that person to do? You know, and the one thing they talked about was this person, you know, whatever kind of use they're gonna do something downtown. But I'm saying, have concerns is that if the building owners are not on board, nothing's gonna happen downtown. So, I guess having one of the biggest, first goal that they would have to have is to, if the building owners, property owns on board to, to do A, B, C, and D.
So, is downtown improvement something that, I, I see downtown improvement as something that tourism can use, but I don't know if tourism directs downtown improvement. I think they're more about marketing what's here versus create, and, and maybe creating events, but more about what marketing was already here. So, it seems different, but I'm open to changing my opinion.
I wouldn't think, I will definitely be enough for me to do something regarding, like, for example, investing something like for the Main Street thing or whatever. Here we're talking about needing emergency service and employees and everything else that are, uh, bigger necessities than having another person for that. I do think that, um, I personally feel that it would be worth looking into and see what will the effects be in one year if you were to lower that tax bracket? And see if he, if he makes the difference, he may make the difference. Now, remember, we have another park that is supposed to be bringing a lot more people to the town. So, right there, I saw, we're selling ourselves. I mean, the rec center has people that are selling the, the game, they are selling the space. The aquatic center has people that do that for themselves and they do a wonderful job trying to get those, you know, those people to come to the town. So, I personally feel like we haven't gotten anything for the last year. I will be more interested in lowering the tax bracket. I do have a question for Randy. The Tyler, there was like, Randy, you were saying that there were like two hotels in town, did you say this? Can you tell me, are there ones in Tyler?
Yes, the two in Tyler. Yes, it's two in Tyler.
Okay, and is that anymore that the county owns?
That's it, it's the county as far as I'm aware of.
No.
I know there's one, uh, towards Renek, but I think that one's actually in Renek, in Renek County.
And what about the, um, you had? I mean, there's just so many things that I have questions even with this, with this contract thing.
Before we jump to the contracts, can we just, cause I do wanna, I wanna wrap with the contract and, and maybe we have to do a closed session, we can, but, does anybody else have any pros for internally managing tourism? Like, what do you think are the pros of us managing it? I don't, I don't wanna talk about pros of both regional and the internal, but what's like, what is good for us if we internally manage our tourism?
What a pro thing would be, number one, we know what's here. We know like the little sma, the small park that people don't know about. We know, I said, we as a town as a whole, we know what's here.
Yeah.
So, you know, can we manage it? We probably could, but, but, and the con would be who would do it? You know, who, that bird, now, if you turn a bird, where would that go to?
I would be on board with creating a position without having a definition.
Right.
Very clear definition of what that looks like and what potential income that would be.
Two percent lodging would be around four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars.
Four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars?
Each one percent's around two, two hundred and eleven thousand.
Four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars.
It's like I say, each one percent.
One percent would be two hundred.
Each one percent's around two hundred and eleven thousand.
I guess that makes sense. Okay, other pros to internal management of the program? Knowing that there's logistics stored out, but just like, what's a good thing if we manage the program?
I think there is.
Yeah, well, what's good about that, I guess?
Where you have more control about what's going on. I did have a question, Randy, you probably can answer, um, if I can find it here. There was a document that they provided each year that kind of suggested what the program was gonna look like each year. Is that something that town health was that each year or just the three people on the board?
It was, it was presented to the board along with the budget. Uh, I guess there were presentations that may, made to council that would include information.
Do you have that available? Is that?
Presentation, yes.
What's that presentation here? I'm just looking.
What's it called? That probably takes me longer to find.
Work program?
Yes. I just wondered if that was presented to council every year, if it was just a decision made by that board.
But if, Christina, do you have any thoughts, I mean, is there anything that you see, like, just internally, some benefits of internal program management for tourism?
I did have a thought in regard to Sam's statement about the relationship with staff and tourism. I think that your concern with us knowing Christiansburg better than the tourism department does is obviously accurate. I'm sure every locality would feel that way, um, but I do think that in my experience um, with other regional efforts, the goal would be to have a better communication between, for instance, my department and the tourism office. Um, there's been some communication, but probably not at the level that I would prefer or recommend. And I do think that depending on how council moves forward, that the relation, relationship could definitely be strengthened and improved and, I mean, we have a lot of opinions, recommendations, things that we would encourage and like to see reflected differently and we try to express this as best we can, but at the same time, it's not, it, it, it's partially, it, it's kinda fifty-fifty. It's the tourism's responsibility, you know, to be sure of the content that they're sending out, but also their responsibility to make sure that it's in line with the town's goals. And I think that if there were an improved effort there, we would see communication and marketing efforts from a regional tourism effort that would be more conducive to our goals here in the town, if that makes sense.
It does, do you think that a steering committee, question for everyone, something I was also, I was kinda brainstorming was would a steering committee, if we did regional tourism, would a steering committee be a benefit? We have a great board, but would a steering committee made up of marketing, um, and like Terry and Brad and then a town of Blacksburg or wherever they identify and Montgomery County to provide guidance and direction to the steer, to the tourism office, just to say, "Here's what our, here's what our, here's what our," is that a benefit, uh, or a potential benefit or?
Is that not, is that not part of what the tourism council, Sam, that you sit on is supposed to do?
No.
No?
You're on the, is it the board that you're on?
I'm on the, not the board.
Okay.
You're on the board, I'm on the council.
Oh, wait, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah.
Two different groups.
Right.
Basically, group that I'm on, you know, sleep with some Montgomery County, Chris, Greg, and Blacksburg come together and just talk about what they would like to see. You know, far as me and present come, you know, we can say it have our input, but once again, I would think having more than one or two people representing Christiansburg would probably be a must. But the commission, they basically, you know, they just went to our idea, well, they should. It's our idea, but there sure's been a struggle.
I think there's a breakdown in communication. I'm not sure what the tourism board was like before, um, I came and I've only been here for three years, but I feel like there could be a conversation had on how the relationship works between tourism and the towns and county and what it, what it exactly i- is that we're wanting. And I feel that council's expressed that, but I still feel like there is a, a breakdown in communication.
Do we have the authority to ask for something like a steering committee?
You can, um, of course, and, uh, the tourism development council is set up in the balls. Uh, there was, I guess, previously a sports or tourism marketing group too that, that, that met. Uh, and maybe what you're meaning is kinda some combination of that along with hoteliers?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
And, and maybe public relations?
Yep, and I know we have a restaurant representative also on your council.
Well, we do, well, we do.
So, yeah.
We do have those representatives from different type of businesses on the council, I was just going to say.
That's what I was hearing.
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, yes.
Just to build it up a little bit more.
Now, Randy, you may need to be more, more robust than it is right now.
But I think at least partly, that would be intention as far, as far as answering your question.
But I think at least partly that would be intention as far, as far as answering your question.
The housing rights specify, at least on the tourism development council, that there's a collective person also, there's a hotel representative, there's a restaurant representative. Not to say that other restaurants and hotels couldn't receive emails and invites to that meeting or any of the other, if they wanted to sign up.
Yeah. I think that there's, and there's a big opportunity, if we decide to stay in regional tourism, there's a big opportunity for us to clearly express to the tourism office, here's what we want you to make sure you're telling people about if we stay in regional tourism versus letting them decide what they're gonna say about us, which I know is partly currently happening, but with more direction.
How many years have we been in the part of them? Been on these?
That's what I packet, that's the cover sheet.
Twenty-one of them.
Yeah.
Uh, that was originally staffed at the, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, I believe, the first three years. So in two thousand and fourteen, I think is when we revised the agreement.
Last thing I'll say, sorry, if, if, if council wished to consider to stay in, I think as far as what you were saying, Johanna, about, like when you mentioned the LED signs, for instance, about the park, I wrote that down, I think that's a great idea. And I think that part of my job is to help, um, move forward the vision that council has for the town from a marketing and branding and, you know, advertising perspective. So if it were a situation to where we had a steering committee or we didn't have a steering committee, but I held in the communication of what it is that you all want, what it is that you want to see in order to be happy, and I make sure that that's communicated and work with the tourism office to make sure that we're on the same page and that they are sending out the message that we're, that I'm working on, and I'm working on that message because that's what you all want. I wonder what that might look like if there's just one person to better relay and, and make clear, we want to see this improved by this percent. We want to see, because that's so much of what marketing is, right? It's not just what we feel, it's the statistics and the facts and figures behind it. We need to see a return of investment. And so part of that is tourism doing that, but also part of it is maybe us being able to be very direct and clear in our communication. And I feel like if it's your wish that I could help with that, and that's part of my position.
Why do you feel like that's not happening now? It's your gut.
All right, I'll say that.
Okay.
I don't think it's necessarily tourism itself, unfortunately, and I'm not putting on a doofus, but I think it's cause of pressure that we believe that we just, you know, we would stress, this is what we want to see. It's kind of like it ran around and ran and didn't catch. So I think, and we don't know who the new director's gonna be like, we don't know who he or she is, we don't know what they're gonna be like. But I think we need to, in that position, just want to listen to our concerns. And, you know, and they don't understand, ask questions.
Yes.
But I think probably here before is that, but I know we stressed it a couple of times and it just.
Like for instance, regarding the cure agency, which gave the presentation at the last town council meeting, they, this is full transparency, they sent the presentation to us, to Randy and myself, and I expressed to them, these are some concerns that our town council has, and not just our town council, me as a PR director, that I feel that we are often underrepresented. That's very frustrating because my department works very hard to make sure that we are very well represented, and we care a lot about, you know, the image that we carry. So if we're in the regional tourism group, we feel underrepresented, you're talking about Christiansburg, but you're showing a picture of Montgomery County, that's a problem for me. So I expressed that to them, they made the adjustments, they said, hey, that's, that's great, we see that, we hear what you're saying, do you happen to have a few photos that you might suggest? I send them over photos, they update their presentation, their presentation better reflects Christiansburg, when really all it took is just communication of what it is that we feel like we're lacking and someone who hears that and makes those adjustments. And I'm not saying that's the entire problem and that's for you all to decide. Um, but I do think that oftentimes, uh, clear and direct communication can improve a lot of things.
That's what Christine was saying, though, when Alexville came in, they did give a presentation to the council, to the council, to resident council, not before they came to you. And we did, we, we made recommendations, you know, if you come and give a presentation to the town of Christiansburg, we want to see Christiansburg, not in your text so much, not Bradford. So I think, Alex, what was his name? I think you saw his presentation had a lot of Christiansburg photos and that's, that's what we did. We stressed, this is what we, the town council would like to see. We'd like to see our name out there, we like to see what we offer, you know. You know, people might come here and say, well, I'm gonna stay at Blacksburg. It's okay, long as we say, this is what we offer you.
Right.
It's your choice to stay or not, we can't make you stay. But, but I think Alex, once again, I'm going back on him. You know, some people might say it was such a pitch for him to try to get on. That wasn't his job, his job was to inform town council per my request. Cause I, I requested he come and let us know, town council know, what his recommendations were to be forward, town, to be tourism forward. And that's what, I think that's what he done, but it's just communication.
I, I've been having unusual with tourism even long before I was in town council. It's been, they have been, we have been paying to the tourism agency for thirteen years. And Mr. David, to be fair to him, he had only been there for what, uh, I mean, he only actually said that he wanted to be there just so he could retire. So that's all he wanted to, and he obviously got that, and great for him, he's gone. But it still leaves me the question, thirteen years of where, where were we and where are we now? And I feel like I'm in the same place I was years ago. And it has not changed. And even though the head person has changed, I feel in the same strong place. And, I mean, you talk to other businesses like the bowling alley or other hotels and everything, and they have been frustrated for decades, I mean, for over a decade now. And I was just talking to Logan Amenede, going, she's just like, my frustration with this has been for, for a long, long time. We're not getting our money's worth. We have not, and we're still not, you know. And so I feel their pain because they're, I mean, they are collecting that, and they're also being charged for fees to collect that tax. I mean, they're not just being charged for that, but they're also, a lot of people say other people are paying for that, but no, they are paying those fees too, so that comes out of their, the revenue too. I do think that, um, being part of this, this effort of being with all their town and with the older town and the county, I think it's a great idea. But sometimes you just guys say, this has not worked for that while. I don't think it's working now, and I don't think, let's try and figure out if we do it by ourselves, what that does look like. And that doesn't mean that we can always go back. I mean, we can always make other sessions and say, hey, you guys want to do this together? I'm sure they'll be, because the county will be happy because they're barely paying any money for it. But I just think that the county benefits, I would even allow more from the sales tax that they get from our lodging people, from the people that count to the town. So, I mean, they're benefiting both ways. And so it's their best benefit, I, I will offer the county to pay for our fees too, because, I mean, whatever we make is, is gonna benefit everybody.
If we were to move it internal or even if we were to stay in, I'm just curious from my perspective if there's any way that I could help in council's goals for, um, from the tourism perspective? Are there things that you could tell me that you haven't seen that you wanted to see? So I could see if maybe my department could help with that?
I can send you an email because I do a lot of the stuff for the other companies I've worked with, and I do think like things that I want to see change, and so I can send you that.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that would be something that would fall under PR because we are focused on internal communications, not external in tourism. But I am curious if there are maybe some small things that might fall under what it is that we do? And also just if town council considers moving tourism internal or externally, we're gonna have to be able to commute what it is that, you, you mentioned not seeing what you wanted to see over the past several years, so.
Yeah, what, sorry.
No, I just want to make sure that we can figure that out.
I am excited to see, um, what we can do and what ideas we can come up with. I think it would be good to think about until then as maybe we figure out, maybe we'll meet again, or maybe it's even two more word sessions, I don't know, or maybe it's just one. But I do think that this, this is important talking about because this is a lot of money. There's a lot of money that we can do a lot for, for, for us, as tax, you know, collectors, because that's what we are, and we want to recreate, well, we want to do a lot more things for the town. I mean, how wonderful would it be for us not to have a loan in the new park, you know? Or to have to do, you know, to sell more parks, or let's do another domain in the, in the town with the money that's out.
Just to follow up on the question, there's two questions I want to ask, and then, and I, I don't want to take too long. But, um, what are those metrics that would help you see the return on investment? We talked about return on investment, what is the metric that you often wanting to see?
I want to see something, this may not answer your question, but I can tell you what I want to see. I feel like the atmosphere and the ones of Blacksburg are very different to what Christiansburg citizens want, um, maybe in a different way. Uh, because they're a college town, I do think that there are other things that they are more into. Like maybe, um, maybe those things are more so to the college atmosphere, and maybe Blacksburg, I mean, Christiansburg residents are more so into the, the downtown feeling or the going to the mall, uh, kind of thing, or having the, the events of the park, or having, you know, nighttime events, uh, the new park, or whatever those happen. But I do think that maybe the ones from Blacksburg are different than the ones in Christiansburg.
I think they probably will be, but what measures, what numbers or information would be given to you from Christina, from tourism office, wherever, that would show you this is, has been beneficial or this has made an impact? But if you, yeah. If there's, if you have a list, but what, what kind of things would help you, help any of us understand that this is making a difference?
I usually steer people to logic tax just because that's people who hotel rooms.
There's no way that you could look at that and say, this percentage come because we paid a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to this guy. It's like he's not doing anything. I mean, that's not a metric.
And, uh, I think it would be, I think we keep telling tourism to prove it's worth to us without telling them what would prove it's worth to us. I know.
And I think it's something that needs some thought if we're gonna continue down this road. You know, one of the things I didn't like about this contract in general was that there's no metrics, and there's no cap, it's just a percentage. So we know taxes are going to increase, and we know we're gonna continue giving money if we stay in there. But what are we really getting from it? We do need to figure that out before we move, not after.
Could I reach out to other, um, similar sized and maybe slightly bigger tourism, regional tourism organizations and see what metrics they provide for their areas? And see if that could give us some ideas of how we could help measure?
Yeah, I think qualitative, and when I say qualitative, I mean like specific numbers and money and rates are really tricky to measure and, and apply to the group of, or investments being effective. But in terms of quantitative, but then qualitative measures being brand surveys, things like that. We can just ask like, what are they doing, quantitative and qualitative data? How are, how are they measuring it since successful? Because I researched this, I had a hard time with it, just not asking other people, but just take basic research. And I think that would help us tell Christina or an internal person or an external person, here's what we need to see to know this is working. And I think things like click rates on websites are helpful, but we need a base measurement on a website. In my opinion, very impressive.
I want to mention something. We don't want you to feel like this is the town's job too. Because I feel like one of the things that I gotta clarify, when I go to other places and we most of us do, when you see those booklets, they are paid advertisement to companies and corporations. It's not the town doing it, it's not tourism doing it. A lot of it is their own hotels are spending the money to make this booklet top end with masks and things like that. And I think, you know, maybe one of those things will be, you know, and I don't have the answers for that because maybe, and I kept thinking about that the other day because I was like, why doesn't the town of Christiansburg have more to say? Coupon books and all kinds of stuff. And one of the things that I came up with was that maybe one of the things maybe is they don't feel like they need to, maybe we're, they are paying too much money already in fees that they really don't want to spend any more money? Or maybe it's not really worth it to them because they really know that those funds are gonna be filled out.
Or maybe it's a function of tourism that we can, and they have the visitor guide, maybe it can be improved.
Um, or, um, maybe there is, and so just to clarify that so you don't put yourself like, oh, I gotta come up with a book, no. I just, I just know that, no, I just know that those things are paid for. And so I wonder how to get there because that's the question that, you know, maybe those hotel people, and maybe that would be the job of the chamber of commerce because we do pay money to the chamber of commerce. And to say, hey, chamber of commerce, what about you guys think about, what are you guys doing to, you know, promote those industries? Because I think when they do good and the more organizations that they join them, the better that they will do. And so I am even okay, like even if there was something to give out, like maybe, and this is crazy to say, but maybe some kind of money to an organization that's well established, uh, like the chamber of commerce to say, hey, you guys need to figure out how to, to help, um, break through, I mean, get more businesses in the town. And I don't know how that will work. I'm destroying that out there.
I, yeah, go ahead.
Just gonna pass this around, so you can take a look, but that's an ad that we had run in the Virginia, trapped up twenty twenty-four travel guide. Just, and I, I think that's kind of what you're talking about in magazines like that. We do, we do things like that to some degree. And of course, you do have to pay the BNS, and we actually paid a little bit more. And that is all going to handle these things for highlighted. And I think we paid five hundred dollars more to have them all highlighted.
I mean, those are worth it, the same do.
So who, who paid, who paid for this?
The tourism one.
Okay.
That's what paid for that. I don't even know.
I know we'll, I know we have another, one other item on the, on the agenda, but I do have one more question, and that is pros of regional tourism. Do you see any, we talked about pros of internally managing it, but do you see any pros for continuing regional tourism management?
I do, yeah. Um, we, right, one of three or more interested parties of employers, something along those lines with a disclosure. Uh, I don't have the writing in front of me, but, um, let's just do that. Um, if we back out of regional tourism, number one, we don't have to say on what they talk about of our area if we're not part of the agreement. We have no control over the narrative if someone else comes in who describes Montgomery County and the two towns. We have no ability to ask them what to say, what to, how to, how to do it. Um, those, those communication lines would be completely severed because we're not paying them for that anymore. So they would have no reason to listen to us. Excuse me. Number two, I think the Virginia Tourism Council out of Richmond, Randy, I'm wrong, there are marketing leverage grants, there are things that localities, municipalities, um, usually in partnership with the MOs are able to, uh, finance and produce, you know, that relates to destination marketing, uh, that we also, from a grant funding standpoint, lose all connection and opportunity for if we're not part of what Blacksburg and Montgomery County would be paying into, is that, is that correct?
You just have to be recognized as a destination, a destination marketing organization.
Right. And how easy would that be for the town to do on its own?
I think it would be fairly, fairly tough, a fair amount of work.
I want to find out, Casey, have you, uh, the museum gotten any grant funding with the help of the museum or the tourism agency?
Not from the local, you know, at all.
What about nationally?
Uh, we've received assistance from, um, like resources of, of things that we can apply to through.
Because we were part of tourism?
No, 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 just like you need to check into this, you need to check into that, you know, things that connect back to Richmond, so.
Well, I do gotta say that the museum does have a presence on the, on their stuff.
On which stuff?
On their tourism thing, on the Montgomery, on the Montgomery Tourism thing.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, even the main pictures for like places to go for parks is the, the garden from the museum over here on Pepper Street.
Well, highlights are always taken by a lot of you.
Right.
Well, but I'm just saying that they are well advertised in there.
I mean, Randy, I was looking at them all the time.
But I'm just saying not everything else is advertised in some other things. And maybe those hotels fall to, or even is our, well, I, I wouldn't say is our fault to for not telling them because we have been telling them that we want to be more.
I'd love to be asked. I'd love to be asked what it is that we want to have on there. I'd love for the tourism to reach out to me and say, hey, we have these slots for these things. Are there any organizations for a certain period of time? Or are there any locations or parks specifically or programs at the aquatic center that you're trying to push right now?
And that's why I think the communication piece, I mean, if you had, you know, I'm not aware pre pandemic of this issue being nearly a problem. Um, and I think there was a different level of communication before COVID twenty twenty as to the office and their, uh, their accountability to the free location. Um, that's, that's my, you know, that's my opinion, um, as a, as a town staff at that time. Um, and then, you know, those experiences. So, but I think if you have the right communication in place, a lot of these problems go away, you know?
But a strategic leader and better communication.
Exactly, yeah. Uh, which I think again, if on a timeline example, I think pre pandemic, at least three, maybe four years ago, we, we were having a different conversation. If, whatever conversation the town was having about tourism was not what we were having. Or even two years ago.
Yeah, because a while back, and she was bringing up, uh, Lisa.
Yeah.
She was in charge of, I mean, she would actually come to town council probably once every quarter or so and gave town council an update. But you know, once again, things changed, hand.
Right.
We kind of didn't get that information as we demanded.
You probably did, but some business was held very unrepresented.
Well, I'm just talking about town council as a whole.
No, she did come to town council, but, and she came to the county, which is funny because it goes back to the county saying that. Um, because when they, you know, they pay all this money and all their parks and everything in the county without our taxpayers' money too. And I, uh, several of their county supervisors, uh, why didn't, you know, why wasn't that there was no collaboration with our park? And that we are part of Montgomery County. And their response was the same. Their response was, well, the town never came and asked us for any money. But then you got Lisa Blakely going over there and giving presentations about the new park and the benefits that it was going to bring to the community. And so I just felt like it would mean, you know what I mean? Like that was expressed to them too, so.
Any other pros of regional tourism? I, one thing, so my pros for internally managing tourism were mentioned. One thing I also think is that in regional tourism, if there's a collective message or a collective place where people go and get their information and everyone in Blacksburg is logging, like those people are there, there's the games and they're accessing tourism information. We are then part of it where we on our own, I don't think can go into Blacksburg and say, hey, Blacksburg visitors, come over to Christiansburg. But in regional tourism, there's an opportunity to cross connect and say, like, here's what's happening regionally for tourism. And that includes us. With us not being in regional tourism, we don't get the opportunity to market to the people who are in Blacksburg, which is going to be more than within Christiansburg because they're coming for games and school events. Uh, and they're putting their money into it because they're making more money from this thing.
I think there's investment that you can put into the ops and things like that and different companies.
But how you put it in front of them if you're not in the region?
Oh, it's on their fingertips, it's on the.
But how do you tell them to, to find, I guess, as I'm saying, if you, how, how?
There is allocation, uh, advertisements that you can do. We do, the town of Christiansburg and every, a lot of locality do it. If you're in that area and you're within forty five minutes from that location, it will literally send you advertisement for that area, for the events and things like that.
So you think like a, an ongoing advertisement that always tells everyone in Blacksburg to download a tourism app?
Well, it's not a download. It will go into their Facebook stuff, it will go when they do a search on Google.
Just telling them to download the app is what I'm saying, like a Facebook advertisement that tells them to download the app.
I don't think many people are gonna do that. They may do the Virginia Tech app and everything else, and that would be worth investing in too.
So telling them about the website then, not an app, you mean telling them about the website where they can get tourism in this region?
I think there is a lot more ways that we can advertise. There's the Virginia Tron that, uh, thing that we can advertise on their bosses. We can advertise on the, I mean, there is the, on the game. I mean, there is, I mean, there is a lot of opportunities to advertise.
I just said, when I look for those things and I don't know where I'm at, I think it works really good. But in Christiansburg and hotels and brings them all up, more than to where I'm at and where I want to go. I'm not sure if, you know, I think a really good guide could be useful. I don't know if there's a current paper guide, but online and paper, but. They're in such modern times that these things are available to anybody who wants to know. And I'm saying, how much do you put in this without knowing what your return is?
I research activities. Whatever gets to the top of my search engine is what I. We have no way of guaranteeing we would be at the top of that search engine, especially competing with other people who are also going to the top of the search engine. As, so, I'm not saying we won't be on the front page, maybe we will be, but that's one concern that I have is competing with activities near me. And you have a question for you.
The Virginia Tech in, do they pay taxes to the, their lodging tax?
Yeah.
No?
Yeah, Virginia Tech doesn't, Virginia Tech doesn't pay taxes.
But they are part of the tourism thing.
They are located in Blacksburg, but they are a part of the Virginia Tech campus and they are exempt from taxes.
But they are part of the tourism, um. They don't both, but they are part of it.
These taxes don't pay.
They, they don't pay.
They, they don't pay, but they also don't pay taxes, so they shouldn't. But they are part, they are.
They're not in that contract at all.
It says right here.
I think they're a non-diving member of the tourism development.
The representatives from Virginia Tech will also be included as an ex-officer, um, board member of the MTD C. This representative will be designated by Virginia Tech and will traditionally be a representative from the university relations office of the tourism hospitality department.
Right, they just don't pay any funding like the free location.
They're a non-diving member.
That's one thing, they are not paying taxes and they are not paying lodging tax.
They're a non-diving member of the tourism development council.
Well, they're a huge partner of our region too, so we can force them on taxes, they're state owned, but it doesn't, nothing happen.
I know, but what I'm saying is that's, that's a big competition for us.
I'll comment, uh, but I just, they're also a partner to whatever we do regionally.
They're, I mean, they're, they're not a big competition, they're the reason our hotels are built.
Yeah, that's.
They, they're, they're the opposite of our competition.
Okay, um, we're at seven thirty, so I was, can we, uh, close with this, on this item with the discussion on this contract? Is there anything anybody wanted to talk about, uh, or point out when it comes to this contract? And if there's some discussions of what are our options?
I could summarize a few points. Um, first of all, it's signed July thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. It's on the last page. And according to paragraph or section six, it will start an initial term of three years, include additional three year terms. So it's a total of nine years and it expires July thirteenth of twenty twenty three. Um, of course, section seven deals with termination and recorded written notice of intent to withdraw. At least twelve notes prior to the date that you wish to withdraw unless government, government fails to appropriate a funding for participation. Uh, it's subject to appropriation. Um, and the last paragraph, section eight B, any personal property can be divided among participating entities in a proportion in which it was paid originally. I understand there may be accounts or something like that that could be shared out.
Now, we appropriated the, the fund for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty four, five, but if we, um, if we are, if our this contract expires by twenty twenty three, we shouldn't be amended to this contract whatsoever. Now, if I'm reading this correctly, um, we can, we, we do budget amendments all the time. We can definitely take the money out as a budget amendment, correct?
I'm not sure if it's unappropriated money that's been appropriated to a particular thing. I don't know, you have to look at the appropriation and the budget to see exactly what it was appropriated to.
But if we're not getting the benefits and there is no director and the whole thing has stated pretty much by itself and we're not getting the benefits of what we're paying for, then the contract will not be valid anymore. I mean, that's for me in real estate or anything else, if you don't do what you say you were going to do, obviously there is nothing that's in hold.
I need to hear that. Backed out to that, you don't hear, are you saying like if they don't, like there's something they're avoiding?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of a contract. Where you don't.
In, in section three D, this, they'll say the town has agreed to pay a county in its capacity as fiscal agent appropriated funds and quarterly installments conditioned upon satisfactory performance of the services described.
So that's, and we haven't been satisfied.
So there's, there's room for interpretation on the legal impact of all these things.
Um, is there a, a director on tap to fill in temporarily?
Yes, we, uh, basically Angie has, uh, for volunteers, Chris Lawrence, who served part time as executive director.
What's Chris Lawrence's background?
He is a former, I guess, planner and he's, he'd also been town manager in that. He's serving as assistant chairman.
Does he, does he have experience with tourism?
He, uh, I, I think he has a little from, like essentially, I guess he was the tourism director for a town event and I guess it's, it's the manager.
Right.
Uh, and I guess a little through his planning and, uh, background.
And he's not planning for Blacksburg?
And, and he has been spending, I guess, time, uh, with David in the office before David leaves and just kind of going over, sort of makes it a real thing.
Is he planning to apply for that position or is he a bridge to a similar position?
I think that is simply viewed as a bridge to positions.
Has it ever existed?
It has not, and, uh, the board of directors actually would like some direction, uh, from, from council in regards to whether you're, you're going to stay or not before we hire the position. Because we don't want to hire the position and then basically eliminate the position.
So if we want to stay in regional tourism, well, we need to decide, number one, we're going to decide collectively. But then number two, we need to decide what is it we want out of that position to the guidance facility if we decide to stay.
Well, uh, my decision will be not to stay on it. But obviously that's my vote.
Okay, well, we're not really saying, but I know. Any other thoughts? I'm not, I, I feel like it would be tricky to, I wouldn't feel good about backing out of the contract unless, um, actually, I wouldn't feel good about it. We've appropriated the funds and I feel like appropriating them. Which is hard to justify, but I don't know.
Is this what you talked, say your line?
And also you wrote a letter on March thirteenth, twenty twenty four, so I think it's going to be in it.
But then that was before we knew that David was going to be gone and, and we actually got even a presentation saying we were not represented. And I mean, we know the side effect of what's been going on for so long. I mean, for how long, how long is it enough, you know, to the taxpayers? I mean, to me, I can tell you, all my family members, a lot of from my husband's side, they all stay in hotels in Christiansburg.
Well, but our residents are not paying. I mean, they could, I guess, if they rented a hotel room, but it's our out of, it's our hotel guests that are paying the percentage.
Well, they could choose to stay somewhere else instead of Christiansburg.
But currently, people are still booking hotel rooms in Christiansburg and it is typically not our residents that are paying this.
But I wonder what that number will be if we were to lower it a little bit to be.
Well, there's no way for us to know.
Well, we can try.
Yeah, no, I think we should, yeah, and I think we shouldn't talk about that.
Because, I mean, it's not fun to be the highest taxpayer around too, you know? Um, I would just say it's always nice to say, to go to another locality and everything, but thanks, wow, you know?
Then we have to decide, uh, do we shift the burden of that four hundred and twenty two thousand dollars that comes in from our external visiting folks?
I wasn't saying.
To our internal.
You can, we can look at all the things that can you make more money if we, you were to lower it to that? You know, there is, there is a new park right now, it's supposed to bring more people in. So will they be able to fill in the couple's, they owe their two hundred thousand dollars. I mean, we're saying that they are to be, you know, building with new people coming in every day and the weekends are sold out and everything else. So where are those people staying? If they're staying in Christiansburg, we should be able to make that extra money. Now, I do think that it's important to, if we were going to get out of the tourism thing, it would be just right for us to lower it to eight percent of it. Because it's not fair to be charging the lodging tax to hotels when they are not getting the benefits. We told them that the reason we were going to charge the, it's the extra tax was to give them the benefit to be able to provide tourist people to, you know, to fill in their hotels.
Yeah.
And right now they're not getting any of that.
So, um, let, we need to close this discussion and move to the next event, but I know it's getting late. So, um, is this something that we want to talk about at the next town council meeting? Are we ready to have this on the agenda and make decisions about it? Do we need to sit and think about some of this and have a second work session? What is your preference?
I would like it in the next town council meeting.
To make a decision versus have another discussion? Okay, does anybody else want to put that on the agenda for next town council or you want to think about it and then?
Think about it, yeah, because I have a lot of, I'm old in college, right? I really do.
So maybe we'll think about it, but if somebody wants to put it on the, on the, on the agenda and of course have a second, put it on there and just let Randy know. Um, and then we'll put it on the next, and if we don't end up discussing it or making decisions, then we can put it on the next work session.
The agenda for the twenty seventh, I need to put out tomorrow.
Okay, very good. All right, let's move on to our next item, uh, item B, emergency services funding request from Montgomery County.
Okay, of course, uh, as you know, we, uh, have our services office and a rescue office in the county. The county provides equipment and some funding for that. Uh, we have been looking at potential location, locations for fire and rescue. Um, in particular, I believe for Pepper Street Road here, although, uh, there is, I guess, some desire for, uh, for better insurance rates at the top of the mountain and both in county and out of county. Uh, although I think with the growth, and growth is kind of dictated more towards Pepper Street. Um, of course, we are struggling and we had historically been volunteer rescue and volunteer fire. Uh, through the years, we've simply gone away from volunteer rescue, um, in part because of the specialized training. Uh, we do more paramedic work now rather than, uh, pass rides at the hospital. It's more like you worked on on site more so now. And because of the more involved training and just the fact that there's been a general law, uh, on volunteering nationally. Uh, we, like I said, gone away from that. We have revenue recovery which helps pay a good portion of the staff, but it doesn't cover full staff cost. And of course we found that with our hand rescue ourselves, uh, I would say we had just by, I guess, uh, fact that we are paying staff for our hand rescue, we are subsidizing some service in the county. So technically, we don't see many staff.
Do they express an interest in providing funding for?
Uh, well, the town council has expressed interest to them in receiving the funding. And council has had you approach, uh, county administrator, you can deal in that regard. She said that she had spoken to her board of supervisors, basing to effective of her request. Although she asked me to basically come back with a request letter of something, something.
Oh, would be a full favor to do now, if somebody wants to take a note.
Well, we can't vote on anything.
Well, but you can throw that in.
You, you could instruct me to prepare a letter, just tell me what to put in it.
Yeah. So is that something that we need to talk about a little bit tonight is what, what might go in there? I mean, there's, there's a need for another location, for sure. There's options for locations, being over on Roanoke Street, so that the top of the mountain is covered, uh, which is, you know, in Montgomery County or Pepper Street where the construction development currently is the heaviest. And there's the consideration of paid fire staff, which eventually we're going to. And there's the consideration of paid fire staff, which eventually we're gonna need to go to.
Some list.
Yeah, something that's upcoming. Uh, so there's a lot to put on our wish list, so we just need to be strategic about what it is we're gonna request and think about what is most important to us.
Yes, and I think the three gentlemen that's behind Randy have a lot in foot.
I think, I think, I think, you know, as far as the staffing portion of the, of the request, you know, as the county goes, number one, we gotta have somewhere to put. I don't have room, I don't have room for extra firefighters in my head. We're full, we're over full, we're maxed out. We're pretty well staffed at EMS, but if we, if we're gonna talk about a second location, that's where we're gonna need help for staffing in the second location. If we build a station out on Pepper's Ferry quarter for fire and EMS, we'll definitely have to have paid staffing to fill that station in addition to staffing for the downtown station. And as far as the volunteer fire has, we have another one that lives in the Pepper's Ferry quarter that could respond to that station as a volunteer. So we would have to consider paid staffing that station around the clock. It wouldn't be just a daylight deal. It would be paid staffing, you know, twenty-four seven. So I think the biggest decision is that, I think one of the biggest decisions that needs to be made before we go to the county and ask for, for help with staffing is, are we gonna build this second station? Where are we gonna build it? How many people are we gonna require to put it in there? I put some figures together in the packet, but I mean, that's, this is best case scenario figures, you know? And, and you know, we don't always work off a best case scenario. We don't have the funding to work on best case scenario. Uh, but I think the biggest question that we need to answer is, is are, do we have a commitment from council to move forward with building the second station? Where is that location gonna be? How many staff do we have to have to be able to man that station, fill it and operate it twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week? I, I think those, that question has to be, those questions have to be answered before we even go to the county and start asking for personnel. And we can go to the county and say, you know, we need twenty-five people or thirty people or whatever, but do we need them right now? No, we don't really need them right now, but if we build this second station, yes, we're gonna need some help. We, we do cover a large portion of the county. Our call volume is, is heavier in Montgomery County than in other stations within the county. And just, just our county calls alone are greater than the other departments within the county.
So if the station, excuse me, if the station was built on Roanoke Road where we first thought we were gonna build it, but it's off the table yet, how do you see us planning that station? You say you have no members living on Pepper's Ferry Road, that area. So how will we man?
I think you're gonna have career staff if you did it on Roanoke. Anywhere we build another station, we're gonna have, have that career staff. I mean, I mean, there's a nationwide shortage of volunteers. Fire EMS, though, there's a nationwide shortage of career firefighters throughout the United States right now. When you have localities like Loudoun County, Virginia, that is one of the largest career departments in the state of Virginia, and they can't get people to apply for jobs there, I mean, how hard is it gonna be for us to get people to apply for jobs here? You know, it's gonna be pretty tough. I mean, no, no one wants to do this anymore. This is hard work. This is stuff that, that the average person does not wanna do now because it's, it is hard work. And we get, we're out in, you know, thirty degree weather or thirty below degree weather and we still have to do our job. Nobody wants to do this anymore. And, and therefore, the whole nation has seen a shortage in, in people to be able to do this kind of work. But I think, you know, I think one of the biggest questions that, that we need to answer is, is do we have a commitment from council to move forward with the second station? And where is that second station gonna be? Once we make that decision and once we decide where that's gonna be, then we can start planning for the personnel to be able to man that station. We've always, we're always gonna have a need for more paramedics. That's just gonna happen. I mean, our calls for service on the EMS side of the business is much greater than the calls for service on the fireside. You know, we're, we're probably looking at in excess of five thousand calls on the EMS side this year. We're probably gonna hit about twelve hundred on the fireside. But, but as far as emergency medical services, you know, the need for paramedics is gonna always be greater than what we need on the fireside. And we're staffed pretty good right now. Are we staffed where we need to be? No, we're really not staffed where we need to be. We could probably stand eight more paramedics right now to get us to where we need to be to have the coverage that we would like to have in a best case scenario, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We'd be pretty good, you know, and I don't need to try, sometimes we're short on the weekends. And Josh could, Josh could speak more on that, but we're always gonna, we're always, the demand for our service is not ever gonna decrease. It's only gonna increase, uh, and that, that's all due to the growth. That's all due to people coming to Christiansburg. That's all due to people wanting to live in Christiansburg. It's due to the amount of housing we have. It's not only gonna be just fire and EMS services, it's gonna continue to grow. As the town continues to grow, our services that we provide to the citizens of Christiansburg are gonna continue to grow. So we have a lot of hurdles there, you know? Growth, growth brings more requests for services. It doesn't matter if it's fire, EMS, police department, police force or whatever. Before we grow, the more people we're gonna have to have.
How big?
So in your opinion, not being on the spot, but I guess I am in life, between Roanoke Road and Pepper's Ferry, pick one or the other, which do you see is the better benefit?
So it could be.
The better benefit's gonna be Pepper's Ferry because of the growth in the Pepper's Ferry quarter. And our, our calls for service in the Pepper's Ferry quarter have increased substantially since we bought, purchased a lot on Roanoke Street. But that doesn't, you know, that doesn't mean if we decide we're gonna put a station in the Pepper's Ferry quarter that we get rid of this lot on Roanoke Street because somewhere down the road, that lot is still gonna be needed for coverage on, on that end of town. The only disadvantage with putting a, a station on Pepper's Ferry quarter is now it still does not cover the insurance rating, you know, to the top of Christiansburg now.
Can I ask you something regarding the, um, the last meeting that you go home, I think it was the last one. I heard something and maybe I heard it in the break, the land of the park. You say that you needed how many acres?
Five acres.
Five acres, but the land that we have is not five acres right now.
The piece of property that we originally set aside at the park area was a piece of property on the right-hand side and around you, I think it was one, three, four acres. It's about two and a half acres total, but the pad is probably about one point five, maybe, I don't know. Because we have, we have stormwater, we have stormwater pond on one side of that property, so there's that piece of property down. But to do a station that we've done conceptual figures with, with the amount of equipment that we will have in the building and the amount of EMS equipment we'll have in the building, and if we build this new building, it, it should be the headquarters station for fire and EMS. It should give us, it should give us both end of one building. And then the, the two stations that we have here in town would be the substations for the town. But if we're gonna build a new building, we need to build a headquarters building to where we can get us all under one roof. We have our admin person all under one roof. If somebody comes to the front door, they got both services right there in one building. And it's recognized as, you know.
So are we not, because I think you said we didn't have enough land there. So right now it hasn't changed. We still don't have that amount, so.
We've got the lot on the left side of the road that is for sale right now. That is at least five acres. I'm not sure what acres is in there.
It's right, it's right around five.
It's right around five acres. We own a piece of property.
So your suggestion will be for us not to sell them, and that would be another request because I want to make sure that I have all the information, one, because I, it's hard for me because I have been thinking about this since the last time you came. Because I've been thinking, I know that the biggest necessity is gonna be Pepper's Ferry. But then you mentioned that to me and I went home literally thinking, well, does that mean that we have to buy more land or whatever, you know? So I really went home thinking and it's been in my head till today, so I'm glad that you're clarifying that. And that's information that I, I want to have before we even put pieces of land for sale, before we do any of these things, which we, I feel like we do need to sell some land to be able to recuperate and to be able to.
And if we sell that piece of property.
It's gonna be hard.
We're gonna drive around and have to buy another piece of property to build a fire station.
And I, and I know that, and so that's why it's important for me to have that information.
I do think it gives acreage down Pepper's Ferry Road further cheaper. Basically, the further you get down Pepper's Ferry Road, I think, the cheaper the land generally gets. Obviously, you don't wanna go out to the county to build a, a town fire station.
Well, and there is my second comment about this question. I know that the necessities are just gonna keep growing over time, obviously with more population and everything else, building on the new park, bringing more people in and a lot of the construction, it is happening around the Pepper's Ferry Road. But one of the things that to me, you know, when I, when I see with our budget, and I think that the necessities that come from the fire department right now, we have been over blessed by the work that you guys have done over the years and use work that has been done over decades. That cannot even be, there is no price to that. You guys have given your life, your physical, mental, I mean, everything financially. I mean, paid your way to be there for so long without being a taxpayer for them. And so I appreciate everything that you and your members have done up to now and, and I hope they continue to do for a long time. One of my biggest problems, looking at it, from the hat of not just being, um, one of the hats that I have to carry right now, the town council one, it's really hard for me to come up with when I look at the budget and using our budget. It's so tight in comparison to the county. We, we collect fourteen cents on a hundred in real estate tax and the county collects eighty-nine. But yeah, they are supposed to provide us our public safety too. And so my advice, and this is just me personally, and just me just saying, I would really, really like to ask for everything and from the county. As for, for them to build a facility, I am okay as a me vote to give the land if we have to come out and figure out what to do with the, with how do we pay for, you know, what I mean? Like for the loans and everything for the park, as long as we have that, that service to us. But I will feel like it's the best interest of the county and towards the town to be able to give that, to help the county be able to provide that, those buildings and those members, those employees for the town of Christiansburg as well. I see, because a couple of my kids go to Reiner and everything, and I go there and I see this beautiful facility in Reiner, which we all pay for. We go through Showsville and Allison and all those facilities that have been built and the parks and everything else. And I'm like, well, they're paying the eighty-nine cents that we're paying and we're having to pay the other fourteen cents. But yeah, we're not receiving the same benefits. I mean, they help with cars and things like that, but they're not helping as much as they are helping us. And they're making a lot more of the revenue to sell stocks in Christiansburg from all our stores, our restaurants, everything that we sell. They make a profit out of us, and so it's not just real estate. They make a lot more money from us, but the taxpayers' money. And I really feel like we should ask them to build the building. We should ask them to, to provide the employees for that. And it should be their responsibility to take care of us as citizens.
So, not disagreeing, but we don't know what that request is yet. So I think we need to back up just a little bit and just talk about what, what are we saying? Are we saying we would like to purchase a different plot of land? And then we can decide what would that building cost and how many employees do we need to have, because we can't ask until we figure that out.
Well, I think it would be interesting to put the whole thing on the table back again, and it's unfortunate to hear this because we just pay for the advertisement for the year, for the land, the sale of the land. But you can possibly change the pieces of property in there very easily because you're really taking a membership.
You can't change the property itself.
Oh, right, so you can change that, so we're not losing that money and, but I do think that I will be so open to having the ability to provide that name because like what you're saying is true. If we sell this piece of land, I, I was with the misunderstanding, I was understanding the whole time that we were gonna use the right side. But now that you have spoken about this, I do see a necessity for the future.
So we're saying that maybe one recommendation is the land of the park. For potential building in the home.
Maybe what we need to talk in council first is about the land. Because we really have the one on Roanoke Street. It does not go anywhere for right now unless we decide to do something else. But I think right now it would be really important to, to decide what are we doing with our land by the park.
I would also be curious to know if we sell that land for five million, so, um, what is the cost of a different plot of land on Pepper's Ferry Road? Because if there's a different plot, a piece of land on Pepper's Ferry Road that you can get for two million, it'd make sense to me to sell that plot of land, go to the cheaper plot of land. I do not know what's available on Pepper's Ferry Road for sale, but I think we can be strategic like that as well.
Yeah, I think what Randy's saying is true. We only own up to a church on Pepper. Do you know where your lines is stopping Christiansburg?
I don't have, I don't know what's available on Pepper's Ferry.
And so what I can tell you from selling real estate for a long time around here, there's barely anything you can find. You may have to annex land from the county to be able to do this, but the only land that's been available, the investors have been buying it like for a high amount of money. And I cannot really tell you, they're even going up to the lines of the county already. I mean, the states and homes, they went up on the back. You got family that bought all the land on the front. I mean, and it will be very stupid to buy land. There is land available probably at the very back, but it's not accessible to a main road. I mean, this is right out on your main road.
There's other land that's available, not on Pepper's Ferry Road, but in the Pepper's Ferry quarter. There is land that is, that is available there. We've looked at several different pieces of property. My feeling is, is we've got five acres of land that, that we own. Why would we sell it to buy another piece of property if my costs of paying them out are more money to be able to buy that piece of property than what we currently have?
It can only be expensive to cost them plus money.
Right, yeah, that, that would be the only rea, only reason why I would think that we would do it is if we could purchase another piece of property for rest of what we're trying to sell.
But once again, it's gonna be really hard to get the main road.
Correct.
From that spot of the park. I mean, like I said, there is land for sale on the back road. I mean, um, there's farms that you can buy. You can probably buy houses and stuff like this.
There's property, there's property between the rec center and Pepper's Ferry also that is available for sale.
That's quickly accessible to Pepper's Ferry.
Correct. It, it doesn't spec, you know, the station doesn't have to be on Pepper's Ferry as long as we're in that quarter right there. You know, there's, there's property around and, and we've looked at property, different properties around there. You know, I think, I think, I think what I'm looking for, you know, we've got money in the budget to be able to do design work, but we're not gonna design anything until we have a lot.
I agree with you.
That money can sit there. It can sit there and we can roll it over to the next city here.
Because we just brought it on out the other day and I was like, and after, once again, after you spoke and I was like, why are we spending money when we don't even?
We're not gonna spend any money until we know.
I appreciate you for that.
Where we wanna build that. We're not gonna go to the trouble to design a station when we don't even have a lot.
Exactly.
So I think we need to, you know, there's other property around. I think the big question that we need to answer is, is do we want to pursue other property in town? Is it something that Randy can do or something that Randy can task me with talk as a property owner to see what property is available and what the cost might would be if we would do that? And then come back to council and say, hey, here's a piece of property we can buy for X amount of dollars. We think it's suitable for our building. Is this something that we can do or not do? And then once we make a determination that we're gonna buy a piece of property or reuse the current piece of property we have, then the next step is doing the design work for the building. And that's, that's what we have the most of.
I would be more inclined to go along with that type of plan. I see that per property as prime property that should be producing income or sales. Give us promise that that was gonna be sold to pay towards that big spark set. And then, you know, I mean, you guys don't have to answer to that. You know, but I mean, I want you to have what you need, but I'm not sure it needs to be on a private piece of your. You know, but I mean, I want you to have what you need, but I'm not sure it needs to be on a prime piece of real estate.
Sure, but, and then, you know, and then again, like I said earlier, you know, if, if we're looking at spending five, if we've got a $5 million piece of property right there that we own already, we've already bonded the park, and we have to turn around and buy another piece of property for 6 million. Or we'll sell it for 5 million, we'll have to get 5 million, but the money's not gonna go toward that park. It's gonna go back into that other piece of property.
And if it goes towards something that's putting money, a business that is very successful because of that location and it's feeding money into the coffers, then that's an advantage to all of us.
That's actually, I believe you're.
You can't find a suitable location for 3 million, obviously, if we look at that.
I think we should look and see what's available.
Can you, um, I think a better question would be, um, as far as like when you asked about that, the whole thing goes, what we wanted as a request from the county? I would be okay with like even directing Randy and their team right now to talk to the county and say, because this is such much of our problem today in my city for us. And say, hey, can you build us a place? Can you find a place for us? Can you help us with this? The, the town is committed and trying to figure out how we can make this work. I think it can be a collaboration between both of us. But the county need, it's a necessity to the county as well. If something happens in Christiansburg, I mean, it's gonna look bad on them too. We don't want anything to happen in Christiansburg too, and they don't want it either, so.
Did I recall a conversation about that being doable if their name was on the building?
Can we?
It was an issue with that one. I mean, because.
I think that's a little oversimplifying.
Yeah, yeah, but I haven't heard any from them.
I was up on the park.
Yeah.
So I think what, I think what you're saying is that, yes, we're interested in the Pepper's Ferry corridor. Yes, let's look at pieces of property that could potentially be five acres plus, plus, and also less than the sales part. And then maybe we discuss those in a closed session and decide. I personally think we need to come to the county with a plan. I don't, I think if we come to them to say, help us work out a plan, they're gonna be like, mm, just come to us.
I think if we, I think if we have our plan in place, it's, it's gonna be easier to present to the county.
I want to be easy for them to say yes.
And be more, more defined when we, when we present that to the county. I only have one other question for you guys, and you can head on or not. If this is gonna be the headquarters station for firing EMS, do you want visible to the street?
And you mean, uh, the main?
The main street. The main, the main area.
Either North Franklin or Pepper's Ferry or primary corridor.
Correct.
Is what you mean.
Correct.
I don't feel super strongly about that.
You're gonna be able to see it from the main street.
I don't think it matters to me as long as the vehicles are able to exit out in a, in a safety way.
Cause I've looked for property. I've, I've been looking for property for a year.
My biggest concern is to end up with like Blacksburg, end up with a circle thing in the middle and everything else. Like I want to make sure that you guys have the piece of land if you, we're going, if you're gonna be looking for something that is easy access for you guys and easy exit for you guys. Because I really, I don't think most people, when they go to a town, they're looking for the fire station. I think they're looking for places to eat and things to do. I mean, they're looking for you guys, it's their necessity, but I don't think they're looking for a building.
Yeah, I think, I think the, one of the key factors you just mentioned right here too was definitely for sure. It has to be accessibility for us to be able to get out, to get to the call and be able to go any direction we need to go. I mean, we need, we need to be, we need to be near or close to a traffic signal so when we come out of the station, we can go to Blacksburg, we can go to the bypass, we can go to 81, we can come back into town, we can go to the camera section of town or whatever. I mean, it, it needs to be ease of access on current signal. That way, we don't have to fund the money, find the money to put another traffic signal in. So we've, we've been looking at property and a lot of property in that area over there. And I've got some ideas and we'll just keep looking for, tell those out.
And sometimes you may mean buying a house. You know what I mean? With a lot of land. I mean, that's, um, there is some houses that have some land, um, off of Pecker's Ferry Road that.
We, we do have a few specific properties, I think, in mind. Um, we wouldn't really necessarily wanna discuss those openly outside the ones that the town already owns. Would you want me to add this as soon as possible as an upcoming, uh, closed meeting discussion?
I think that would be great. If you're ready, then I think that's a great idea.
I think you guys need another week, right?
Nah. I can't, I can't make it happen.
To the next one then.
Two and a half weeks.
Yeah.
Let's see.
All the party members may not be available by then.
There is one I was suggesting about going to the county. And I know what you're saying, Tanya, that you want to be organized. But the county people, they are on the county every day too. And they talk to people and everything and they may know something that we don't know.
The county is, the county's looking for property right now for Montgomery County Fire EMS. They're, they're searching for property all over Montgomery County right now for Montgomery County Fire EMS. And that's for future builds, that's not for building right now, that's for future builds down the road. Where are the corridors at that, that the Montgomery County Fire EMS group is gonna be building CDs for them to build stations, sub-stations all over the county?
Are you guys talking right now about that?
We've had some offline discussions about different type, different properties in towns and stuff. And, uh, you know, they're, you know, the station that they approved in Shawsville for the rescue squad is currently on hold right now. They're not, they're not moving forward with that piece of property. That's, that's in Shaw, they still have that piece of property. But, uh, since they, since there was a need to, for them to staff the Allison Fire Station during the day, seven days a week, uh, they, they're gonna move everything into that Allison building and use the existing building they have and remodel and outfit it to fit their needs instead of building another building. Which totally makes sense, uh, for them to do that. But they're, they're looking, they're looking at areas all over Montgomery County right now for possible sites down, you know, 10 years down or 15 years down because of the land shortage. Uh, you know, everybody, you know, like you said, if it's, everybody, all the developers are buying that property and developing it out. Property, property just hardly come out. That, that's kinda property's hardly come out. We've got some pretty good ideas about some different sites besides the park property. We can move forward with that.
And like you said, uh, you know, they have access to a lot of information we do. Like we all see where the data's trending and, you know, I mean, if you recall, so you might have seen, you know, with the Roanoke station, that's because the, the calls were predominantly in that area. And I think it's important to note that the calls aren't shifting towards like the Pepper's Ferry area. They're just increasing over there. We're not losing calls on this side at all. So I think it's really important to like to, uh, be respectful of like the time and everything because, um, we're not gonna ever see a decrease in volume on this side because of the highway. And, uh, I mean, that's, that's what's just gonna keep increasing over there especially with all the construction that's happening.
You've got a lot of the students that are moving into Christiansburg, which we're now leaving here for. So, and then you've got a lot more people moving in the area, so.
I agree.
It's good.
Good time to be in Christiansburg.
Okay, anything else on emergency services funding requests? Okay, anything else before we end the work section? All right, we're turning.